All right, let's move on to public comments for items not on the agenda. Individuals are allowed three minutes. It is council policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff or investigation and/or actions where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any item not agendized pursuant to state law. And if we have folks in the audience, if you could raise your hands. And bless you.
Thank you.
And you're welcome.
We do have one hand raised, Teri Chavez.
Okay.
Just one moment while I bring you in and unmute you. Hi, Teri, can you hear us?
Uh, yes, I can. I can. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Medina and council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak. You may have seen the numerous comments on social media from our community members during this past week regarding the fighting and mudslinging going on. Elections are occurring all over the United States, and candidates are responsible for their own actions and accountable to how they act and treat others. I want to touch upon the need for civility and honesty. Now more than ever, we have to put divisions behind us, and we have to unite this great city of ours. We are one city. We can't move forward when social media contains attacks and outbursts that show a lack of care towards one another. We also can't move forward when misinformation is spoken from candidates to obtain potential votes. I have attended several candidate Zoom calls, including the Zoom meeting organized on Sunday by Councilmember Mason for herself, Seymour and Hamilton. When candidates make comments that are not true, it concerns me because only those that are close to the truth are aware of the truth. For example, Councilmember Linda Mason mentioned many times on social media and again during her Zoom call that she and her husband Andrew Mason have been asking for years for a subcommittee to be formed that includes city council members and school board members. Any community member listening to this might assume that we don't have such a committee and that one never existed. This is simply not the case. The subcommittee has existed for years, and in 2019, the subcommittee included Andrew Mason. The school board minutes from January 16th, 2019 indicates a unanimous vote for item, Agenda Item H2, which was a list of all subcommittees. The subcommittee listed as Joint Executive Committee has a stated purpose of committee meets with city leadership. Trustee Mason and trustee Martinez were on the committee. Another item that Councilmember Mason brought up during her Zoom call was that the school district sold the Ingle property and asserted her opinion that the Board of Trustees sold the property when it could have been leased as a hotel. The school board spent over a year in discussions with over half a dozen meetings, some of which Councilmember Mason came and spoke multiple times at the podium, and also stated that she called the Omni Hotel to ask for their potential interest in leasing the Ingle property. At the time, Ms. Mason was the chair of the Planning Commission. After election to city council, Ms. Mason also spoke at the podium in hopes to influence the board to lease not so. Speaking on a subject that you are further downstream to legally approve, either as a Planning Commission chair or as a city council member begs the question of conflicts of interest. The city attorney would have to chime in here, but it sounds like a slippery slope to me where an elected official might need to recuse themselves of their vote downstream if they've taken such a stance on their future action item. Our district is no different than the other 1,000 public school districts in California. All districts need to follow California ed codes regarding surplus property, including forming a committee containing seven to 11 community members to deem property a surplus. Councilmember Mason has continued to question the process of the Board of Trustees followed in recent land decisions. This is a slippery slope because we had many closed session discussions containing confidential information that Linda's husband, trustee Mason, is obviously privy to. Can we please work together as united elected group rather than making subtle or blatant attacks towards the district or school board? Please band together as a city and work together for the betterment of our community. Thanks, everyone. Let's encourage respect and honest campaigning. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next person for public comment, please.
Next, we have Claire Luna.
Thank you. For the speakers, there is a three minute clock that if you're viewing, you'll see it. Okay, next, please. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Claire Luna. Just one moment, Claire, while I bring you in.
Can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
I'm ready. Um, so, yes, sorry. Hello to Mayor and council members. I want to start by saying I heard about San Bruno Now through Nextdoor. It was advertised as a group to join for a citywide conversation. When I joined the group, the Facebook group, I saw many attacks on a candidate, a council member, and their supporters. Some were direct, some were passive aggressive, but were all repetitive. These attacks clearly went against the group rules of being kind, courteous, no name-calling, no bullying, and no fake news. It didn't make sense to me since it was advertised as an inclusive group for all of San Bruno residents. I came to find out that one of the group's admins was candidate Stephen Seymour, and it was his wife who was promoting this group on Nextdoor. I also found out that two candidates who escaped the heavy criticism were Linda Mason and Tom Hamilton, two candidates who Stephen Seymour has aligned his campaign with. In my personal opinion, it is a conflict of interest for Mr. Seymour to moderate the group during his candidacy because as an admin, he is able to approve or deny and delete comments, especially ones that violate the group rules. Since this came to light last week, Mr. Seymour has since removed himself as admin from the group, but the damage has been done. People have expressed to me that they feel a divide in the community, and they feel they were bullied for expressing their opinions on that group. I feel people, including me, were misled. This group recently reaffirmed their group is neither neutral nor unbiased. They are led by a group with a well-known political agenda. But I remind you earlier that the group was promoted as a citywide conversation by Mr. Seymour's wife. To conclude my thoughts, it's disheartening that the candidates I mentioned above witnessed the bullying behavior while posting and replying to this group frequently and did not denounce it nor stop using it. I hold them to a higher standard and look to them to lead by example. I ask the council members and candidates to acknowledge that this type of behavior is not okay in our community. We are currently in a crisis, and our mental health is very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next, we have Jessica Martinucci.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, Jessica, yes, whenever you're ready.
Um, so Barbara Lowry, San Bruno resident, asked me to speak on her behalf. She and I went over this several times, and it's a lot longer than three minutes. So what we decided is she asked me to announce here tonight that you please visit her comments. They have been posted on the website, and she really encourages everybody to read them as she worked hard on her statement and wants every word to be heard, read, and seen. So thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Um, I see no other, well, wait, just one moment. Sasha Martinez, just one moment.
Can you hear me?
Hi, yes, we can hear you whenever you're ready.
Okay. I think you'll always have bullies no matter where you go, and I see it more and more on social media because it's easier to hide behind a computer and bully someone than to do it face to face. For the past few years, I've watched a handful of people on San Bruno Now page treat others with disrespect and cause an obvious divide in our city, and it's a shame that grown adults behave like this. I think the bigger shame that leaders of this town have allowed it. At times, they even encouraged the behavior, knowing it was a benefit to their campaign. Not once did any one of the members that hold a city position take a stand against the negativity and say, "This is not how we want our community to behave towards each other." Instead, they looked the other way. They didn't do anything or say anything because it was not against them, it was against someone or anyone that was not supporting them. The first stance I would have expected from Linda Mason, Stephen Seymour, or Tom Hamilton was not to use San Bruno Now as part of their platform since it was a toxic environment. I finally gave in after watching all of this bashing against one another, and I decided I had enough, and I wanted my voice to be heard, and I wanted everyone to know that the candidate I believed in, because he was being trashed over and over, and I found it unfair and outrageous of the outrageous lies. I know of other people who wanted to stand up and give their peace of mind but chose not to in fear of the backlash from the admins of San Bruno Now. I was immediately called out as a lying hack, and there's three in particular people that would tag team until you leave or they would ban you. In my case, I was threatened to be banned if I didn't stop asking questions why some people were not allowed in the group. It's no secret that I'm close to the Marshall family, and I'm very proud to call them friends. Paula Marshall, wife of Bob Marshall, mayor of over 12 years, was devastated by the things that were being said about her family on social media. Paula Marshall is one of the most kindest people I've known and ever met, and for her to have given so much of herself to this community and have to see these posts that were being said about her family. We talked, there's only over 30 members of the Marshall family who have raised and recited and contributed to the community, and she was heartbroken. San Bruno should be better than this. I really hope there's some kind of stance against the social media bullying, and I know you can't stop it, but there's certainly stances that you can make against it and stop this from happening in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next, we have Tim O'Brien.
Hi, it's actually Reina.
Hi, Reina.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak this evening, and I actually want to make a general comment about all the, what has talked about the social media, San Bruno Now and everything. I think everyone that is complaining about San Bruno Now has to basically reflect and say, "Why are you joining?" to begin with, okay? And secondly, do you complain to Facebook when something basically is posted about someone else? I'm not in social media at all. I'm a grown adult, okay? It's a choice that we all make. We need, you're right, for those that have spoken, it is true. We're all adults, and we all should behave as such. You have a choice not to join any social media. That's what I have decided, not to do it. And this is the only forum that I choose to speak when I have an issue with my community or the city. So I believe that it's a choice we all make, okay? We all make as an adult. And think about that. You cannot reprimand someone for having a platform so people can come in and talk, okay? Or express their feelings. Not everybody's going to agree with you, and I'm talking about everyone. Not everybody's, it's called the world for a reason because we all have a different opinion, different ideas. So as an adult, tell yourself, "Do I need to be in this platform?" And if that's not the case, then don't join. I don't have Facebook, I don't have any of the social media. Why? Because I don't have the time, first of all, and second of all, I, my life is basically, I'm a very happy person the way I am when I don't involve myself in social media. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next, we have Marco Durazzo. Just one moment.
Hi, good evening. Yeah, hi, good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm just chiming in here to give a little bit of context to some of the comments that I've heard before me. I just want to start by saying that the folks that have spoken before me, I know them personally, I respect them and their peers and friends in the community, but I just want to give a little bit of context. It's an election season. I know anxiety is running high. I know sensitivity is running high, and I've seen personally a lot of the mudslinging accusations going both ways. Not that that makes it okay, but I just want to add some context in that folks are kind of doing this. It's a two-way street on some of these kind of aggressive comments. Secondly, I, to my dear friend Teri, I was the moderator for the conversation on Sunday with the three candidates that you referenced. I moderated that conversation. I heard a response that was very different than yours. I'm happy to compare notes with you with what the candidate did and did not say, but I just want to kind of be careful about coming on here and saying candidates are being misleading or using the term fake news. I think we're a better community than that. I think we need to be respectful. I know it's easy to accuse and blame San Bruno Now for this, that, and the other, but it's true, there's more than 1,000 people on there, and that doesn't include the people that are not registered to San Bruno Now that visit the site frequently to kind of get a sense of what's going on. So I'm hoping that after this election that folks can come together as adults in a different way, and I hope that people can understand, being that we're in an election season, anxieties are heightened, people are sensitive, but you know, we need to really own our behavior and be accountable for what we're doing as well before coming on a kind of a public forum and accusing other folks of being disrespectful. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate the opportunity to address the council.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next is Anna Allen.
Just one moment, I'm trying to unmute you. Anna, I'm unable to unmute you.
Is that, can you hear me now?
Yes, there you are.
Okay, perfect. So I have, I missed the first, unfortunately, the first 15 minutes of the call, but I do want to put out there about, you know, the mudslinging and things like that, and in particular, I want to be, actually, I want to be really specific about one individual that Stephen Seymour knows, and she had referred to Councilwoman Laura Davis as a racist. You know, Marco just said something about being accountable for your behavior. Her behavior, this woman that posted that, is despicable in her comments. There's no, there's nothing valid about what she says. Laura Davis is far from a racist, and I can tell you as a Mexican-American woman that she has been my friend for, or I've known her, I should say, for 30 years. This is not a racist woman, and this kind of stuff has to stop. And when Stephen, if you're on the phone, Stephen Seymour, when you say in a comment that we need more of Ms. Avalos's, you know, people like her, that's really, it doesn't encourage me at all in humanity because we don't need people like this. What we do need is kindness, and you know, the divisiveness that's going on right now is really sad, and it's, you know, starting with the president, obviously, you know, we're in a really sad situation as the United States, but you know, community, we're supposed to help each other. This pandemic is horrible. I have found that people are more kind and seem to be, you know, kind of getting to know their neighbors a little bit more, and that's really great. What we don't need is to have this kind of talk out there that's not true, disgraceful, and then to be encouraged by a candidate for city council is, I don't get it. I don't understand it. I've lived in San Bruno for 30 years plus, and I just am saddened by it, to be quite honest. We don't need this. And I just wanted to get that out there so that we can hopefully come together as a community, not call each other names, talk instead of going behind a keyboard and saying horrible things. That's just not how communication works. That's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next, we have Claudia Quinn.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Hi, well, we've been residents in San Bruno for more than 20 years, and I have to say one of the darkest days of our residency here was a morning about a week and a half ago when I opened up the social media and saw the previous speaker call one of the people running for mayor a piece of S. and said that Stephen Seymour was garbage. And then I had to find out more about this person because I couldn't believe how an adult would, I could understand teenagers doing it, but an adult doing it and finding out that this woman is almost as old as I am and that you would actually go on to social media and say that about anybody. I don't even know that she's ever met Linda, and I think then to hear you speak tonight condemning all of the mudslinging, you know, I'm beyond words. I think it's just about the saddest day for San Bruno, and I think we all need to take a deep breath, realize that everybody running, everybody running wants the best for the city, and I think we need to all work together to try to make that work out because waking up, seeing that comment, if I could have, I would have packed up our dogs and belongings and gotten out of here. That's how bad it was. So folks, when you're putting down everybody else, stop to think about what you've just smacked up there on the screen. Okay, thank you.
Next, we have Stephen Seymour.
And I was on mute. Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please. I apologize.
Next, we have Stephen Seymour.
Kind of an interesting conversation I'm hearing here. Am I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I agree with the previous speaker Claudia about the speaker before her. I really think that, I've been kind of quiet about these things because really I can only control my own voice. If people go into a social media platform and make posts, there's nothing I can do about what those people are saying. But I will tell you that she, the previous speaker to Claudia, talked about Abby Avalos. I don't, I don't know Abby Avalos. I've never met her, and I did make a comment once about her sticking in there because we need to make change together as one city, but that comment had nothing to do with the post that she discussed. They're connected, they're disconnected. The comment was three months earlier, and she connected to a post that was three months later. I think, like Claudia said, that we need to realize that all of our voices matter. It's important that we come together and that we find common ground, and we're all accountable for what we say. I, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much. I think Sonder might want to speak.
Hi, this is Sandra Perez Vargas.
Hold on, Senator, she's going to reset the timer for you. Okay.
Thank you. I have no intention of speaking tonight, but some pretty nasty things have been said tonight, and not just tonight. It's been going on on social media for months, and my response is usually no response because comments, negative comments, horrible comments say more about the person saying them than about the person they're saying them about. And so at least two, three, four people who've spoken tonight, I'm really amazed that they're on here playing victims because, I mean, you can screenshot what they've been doing, and it's been quite abusive. And we have some other keyboard bullies up and press more that they're very liberal with their words on social media, but if you're in front of them and you say hello, they won't talk about the issues. They'll just go right back to their keyboards and attack you. So yes, I do put, anytime somebody joins Nextdoor, I do invite them to San Bruno Now. It started because there were so many areas in San Bruno, so many residents who felt left out. They've been trying to call code enforcement, call the city manager, and getting nowhere. Trucks were parked on our sidewalks, on people's lawns. The city wasn't doing anything about it. So we needed a platform. After going to the city council year after year, nothing was happening. So this group was formed, and it's a motley crew, just like anything else. It's all organic. It flows. We are all responsible for our own voices. An admin is not available on San Bruno Now every second of the day. And San Bruno Now Discussion Group, for those of you who don't know it, is not Stephen Seymour's. It is Andy House's. That's his baby. And for a while, you can handle 500 people as members, but when you're getting it to 1,000, you need a little bit more help. So he invited my husband to do an admin. People had problem with that during the lectures, so he stepped back. And about Abby, a little girl in our community, early twenties, she reached out on San Bruno Now. She was having issues. People immediately tried to shut her down, and those were the speakers that are speaking tonight, by the way. So instead of reaching out to her, they attacked her. So Stephen and many others said, "Don't leave the platform, continue." Unfortunately, down the road, she called Laura Davis a racist. I don't know what that circumstance was, but Laura, instead of reaching out to her, did her own attack. She and all her friends attacked this young girl instead of saying, "Hey, you said you have mental health issues. You know, can we help you? What's going on?" No, they chose to just be bullies. So, you know, it was all ways, so we're all responsible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just as a reminder to folks, if you have spoken once, that's the, you're allowed one time under the public comment, and so let's go on to our next speaker, please.
Paul Wapinski.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but listening to the comments, I had to say this. I think social media is total crap. I don't use it, and I think it's bad for our society because we have people acting like children instead of adults. You know, my grandmother always used to tell me, "There's no excuse for bad manners," and bad manners is all we, is what we have on social media. So I just would encourage people not to use it because it's, like I said, it's bad. But what's more disturbing to me is that the last election, we had Linda Mason and Marty Medina run as a pair, and now we're getting Mason, Seymour, and Hamilton as a pair. And I think what we need is we need more diversity of thought on the council and not people that are running as blocks in order to get their agendas through. So I would encourage everybody to vote however you want, but take that into consideration when you're voting for the council. And the way I look at it for whoever you're going to vote for is we need to vote for people that are going to do their best job and put San Bruno and their residents and the taxpayers first and not their, whatever agenda they want to do. And lastly, I have something that's not related to that. I've brought this up before, but on Cherry Avenue where 380 Overpass is, that place really needs to be cleaned up. I think we should make it a no parking area. There's trash out there. It smells like urine. Somebody needs to do something because it's really, really bad. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next, we have Tim O'Brien. Hi, Tim, can you hear us?
Yes, good evening. Good evening.
Whenever you're ready.
All right, I'm ready. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm just, want to talk about, it seems like a couple of these speakers that came on early on the, on the meeting are here to, you know, criticize some of the candidates that are running this, this year, and especially Anna Allen. Unbelievable. It's hypocritical what she's been saying because she's been bashing everybody on social media really bad. I mean, I mean, there's ways of doing it, but she has been really up-chart, and she knows it, and it's, coming on and saying what she said was just hypocritical of her. So I mean, I'm, I want the best for San Bruno, and I know all the candidates want the best for San Bruno, so we should all act like adults, and I know we want, everybody wants there are certain candidates to be elected, so they'll do whatever it takes to get them elected by bashing them on social media, which is really bad. So I just want everybody to be civil and behave as adults and, and vote, and get out there and vote, and we'll see who, you know, will lead us in the right direction for San Bruno. Looking forward to that very much. Thank you for letting me speak tonight, and have a good evening.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other members of the audience that wish to speak? I'm going to just give a second, make sure.
I see no other hands. I do want to note, we do have one caller calling in to speak. You would press star nine. But I see no hands raised.
Okay, all right. With that said, then.
Through the chair.
Oh, Councilmember Davis, I'm sorry.
I, it's, I know we're not supposed to make comments, but maybe I can as a resident and not as a councilperson. I'm sorry.
Okay, hold on. You asked a, I think you asked a question. So my understanding, and City Attorney can correct me, hasn't been done in a while, but yes, a council member can speak. If we were at the senior senate, they would be coming off the dais, go to the podium where the public would be speaking, and they're entitled to the three minutes as a resident. City Attorney, my corrector.
So, Mr. Mayor, I advise all council members to refrain from commenting about items under public comment. It's clear there's a lot of discussion amongst the public about this. This is an item that's on the agenda. As a council member commented by Councilmember Mason at the end of the agenda, and And I think that we're likely to get into a discussion that nobody will be able to stop if council members begin commenting on this at this time.
Councilmember Davis, you can certainly follow up with the City Attorney on any clarification or...
That's fine.
Okay.
I'll make my comments later.
Okay.